Juice them up.
My son has got about everything.
Tenders?
Tenders, huh?
Everything. You know?
I don't care what it is.
Lawn mower or whatever.
Vehicles, anything except. It's a battery in it, there's a tender.
That's I figure with this one, since it was draining, I'm like, but tinder must went bad, I suppose, you know, it's two years old now.
I keep up my. That's good, that's an eighteen.
Yeah.
If they are bad, you better not put them in, otherwise they're gonna burn out your alternator as they.
Right, yeah, exactly.
They've got to work hard on it, stuff, and if the battery, that could really be all. Yeah, and all that.
Oh, and sometimes lights won't even turn on, the headlights, you know, if it's that low.
That's what they said on a case, the mechanic said, he said it. Your alternator is getting a little, little weak, especially with the power shifts and, you know, everything. Cool, but the power shift, it's, he said, you'll see a big difference in that once you replace.
It's better, more juice, yeah, yeah, everything works like it should. Yeah.
That's like without electronics.
Well, that's, I got a battery charger on the work truck at home now. Take that on and hopefully it fires up when I get home. Pull her in and put a, put that tinder on, under a tinder hanger tonight? It should work.
Yeah, tinder going last so long.
I suppose, and this one's two years old and I mounted it under the hood.
Oh, okay.
Uh, so all I do is plug it in on the front grill.
Grill.
Um. I suppose it just came down. Wow. Animated through that deer hit, so maybe.
So do you have some hard times starting some of that equipment out there in this cold weather, TJ?
Uh, it all started, uh, but the compactor, I think our, uh, um, we're getting a little bad on our injectors, I think they're getting a little weak. I guess it kind of banged a little bit, like a couple misses on a couple of the cylinders, so I think in the spring, if it makes it that long, I think we'll have to put new injectors into it. Oh, but it started.
That's, that's pretty good news.
Yeah, yeah, and I talked to Jeff, uh, about that, uh, moving the bins, so that's good, that's real good.
And then going down to the Army Reserve.
Yeah, yeah, so. That was a good job by everybody who was involved in that, so.
Got a little gravel in there first.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we don't have to do much for gravel in there, Mark, that's, that was where the Army Reserve parked all that heavy equipment.
Oh.
Looks, looks like we got a little bit of, uh, grass overgrowth on the top of it, but.
Grass overgrowth, gravel, that's there, but oh.
Thinking of the, of the equipment they had parked back there, I don't think those bins are gonna have any struggle at all.
Perfect, that's even better, yeah, if they had that equipment, yeah, that's just. Wow. Good deal.
Mark, I need to move this table, do you want to help me?
This one?
Is, is Mark Paul coming?
I don't know.
They go fifty-one, you're such a real.
Oh, and, uh, yeah. I never knew that.
Thank you.
Heat by seat warm there, Mark, it's, uh, I know it's a little cold there, but it's not bad down here.
Oh.
The neighbor was out with a coat this morning.
All right, I better go.
Thank you, TJ.
It was sixty-three, sixty-three degrees.
Wow. I know all about that.
Where are you, Steve?
I'm down in, uh, just below, below Tampa, North, Northport, Florida.
Wonderful. Well, we're supposed to get a, a real warm up this week to like thirty, so.
Uh, actually, maybe even a little higher than that, I see, which is.
It'll be balmy.
Yeah, it'll be for December in northeast Iowa, I think that's pretty, that's pretty unusual and pretty nice.
Yeah.
I think, uh, maybe, I, I'm sure that that's, you've just had your, we've just had our coldest day of the year.
I hope you're right, I think you are.
Yeah, yours almost over.
Yeah. For the next two days.
That way.
So that's pretty safe, that was a pretty safe prediction, I think.
I think you're right.
Okay, Steve's in the. Wood boys from, or Steve, Steve?
Yep.
Got your stuff put in your bin?
Thank you.
Nice talking to a guy that works down at recycling and he says, now that they got that fence all the way around here, said we could even block that up, put our hours from X to X, and then he said we might not have so much of that unwanted stuff with it.
Yeah, we've got a double, double gate and, uh, they, oh, I'm not sure that it's gonna be completely lockable though, Mark. When the, when the, uh, military released that property back to the city, they had to leave a, a ten-foot break in the fence uh, back by the end of the yard that they're keeping, so I don't know if we'll be able to do that, but I, we are uh, in, are able to put cameras up on the city building right across the street, and John Lubke has taken a look at it and said that should work fine. So at least we'll be able to monitor the lot like we are in other places.
Yeah.
Morning.
Now it's gonna be here today.
Yes, it is. Steve will be.
No, just, yeah, we amended, yeah, we amended.
Good morning, Sheriff.
He's down in Florida.
Here.
Got this one back.
It's hard to come back.
Yeah, say how long were you down there for?
Locked on Monday and came back on Saturdays, it was a short stay, but.
What nights?
Heck, yes, and you had, morning, and you had a good time to be there too with the weather we had this over the weekend.
Second time this year for Saturday.
That's not a temperature swing or anything.
Get back at time to watch the.
Sorry, we're gonna.
Come back at time to watch the pack just.
Yeah. Well, I was just thinking if that game would have been at Lambo.
Oh, no.
Uh, they played the Broncos yesterday, but what a three.
With a big injury.
About sixty, sixty-three.
Yeah, I was watching it and I thought, well, you could tell what everybody's wearing, so I looked it up on my phone, it was, yeah, sixty-two degrees or something.
No, I, I'm right up with.
Might have been a little different.
Friday. Forties.
Well, it's nine-thirty, all those, it's so choose, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On meeting four, a foreign person who won't electronic. As a reminder, the meeting is being recorded, you have the option of leaving if you choose not to be recorded. First item on the agenda this morning is our county sheriff, Dan Marks, with his budget review, morning, Dan.
Morning. Uh. I, um, know you've all had a chance to review the budget, um, so I've with the obvious constraints, with the tax laws implemented by the state, I'm aware that, uh, with county's position, it's gonna be once again this year as far as revenues, so I try to make sure the budget reflected that. Um, as you can tell, kept everything basically flatlined, other than a few, uh, small, very minor places, I think, added a little bit to couple items, investigations, uh, something with the jail, but I think it was a total of four thousand increase or something like that. But, uh, yeah, um, the operation expenses have tried to keep the last three years flatlined, except for the year, I think we took fifty thousand out, um, that of course doesn't account for the payrolls and that, that's my back. Questions for me? I don't have a ton.
Do you need to go electric though, Don? Or I should say electric?
I think electric is probably what you're finding too.
Yeah, that's pretty significant.
Yeah.
Well, have we, we've talked about, have you looked at the, the solar?
Yeah.
Standing solar there?
We have, and basically, we would have to do it in a partnership with, uh, someone else, and, um, and when I looked into it, I think back at the time, and it might have been before board, but I, uh, and said, you know, if the county was gonna get on something, we can piggyback off a solar field like that, and for us to do it standalone, um, we were looking at, uh, a twenty, twenty-five plus year payback, plus we gotta look at where we're putting them, and we're putting them on the roof of the jail that we already have had multiple problems with, and so we're looking at additional leaking issues, or anything like that to install.
Micro problem.
We're, we're putting a problem on top of a problem, but, um, so to do it on our own, it was not even close to being cost effective. Um. But to your point, Mark, the cost is certainly, uh, getting noticed by, it's, I, I, it's expensive.
It is.
So, and that was basing it at that cost, um, so, yes, I think, uh, I'd love to be able to get on solar if we could find a way that it would be reasonable on payback.
Yeah, but twenty-five year, that's, that's compounded expense on top of that, twenty, they ain't gonna last twenty-five.
Well, and that didn't include that, uh, yeah, if, if the panels even lasted twenty-five years, and then what the expense would be if we had a problem with the roof, then we'd have to take the panels off to fix the roof, and we were just compounding an issue.
To me, it wants to figure out what's going on, like the bank and parking underneath panels, you know? And we just entered into partnership on the community services building, so, with somebody, so I guess it would be nice if we could figure out what that was and then.
Yeah, if there'd be a way we could partner with existing, I think, that, yeah, I mean, I haven't ran the numbers on that, I don't know what the numbers are, but, um,
Other than the jail and a little bit of the area of the roof over the sheriff's building, you don't have any other place without having the city of decor on it be the one involved, so.
Yeah.
So, the jail obviously is ours, and then that city building, we have like a third of the roof or something, or.
Yeah, the, the, there's a distinct rough line, but where the sheriff's office was at, and we have, it's probably, like you said, probably about a third of the footprint, if you don't count the jail.
Yeah.
Um, that we physically own. Yeah. So, but yeah. Cost is definitely.
Yeah, with the changes in the tax law and the dropping of the, of the tax credits, the outside investors may not be as ready to jump in as they have in the past, so that may be another major issue.
Yeah, even, uh, I had a few different people look at it, and even the vendors that would come in and install it, said that it, they couldn't recommend it currently because of, because of cost effectiveness, it would cost us money, so.
Something maybe to revisit if at some point you have to put a new roof on the jail or something, then at the time.
And right now, we, we just put that roof on, I mean, I, I won't say it's a new roof anymore, time goes fast, but probably five, six, seven years ago, we put a new roof on, so. I remember, uh, Mark Coon was one, uh, working with us with the board, so whenever he was here, it would have been in that area, so.
Yeah, that's five years ago.
Yes, that's.
So, but yeah, otherwise, I tried to keep everything flatlined, uh, I know you guys are gonna, I know you guys don't have an abundance coming in, and your hands are tied for what you can do, so. All right, if you come in what's reasonable, if there's anything that you guys would like to see, you'll have to let me know, yeah.
I appreciate that, yeah.
Yeah, I, it's, can't make it, so we gotta work with what we got, so I understand that.
I don't have the questions, I wanna thank you and your team.
I, I very intentionally tried to come in very straightforward, knowing that there's not a lot to work with, so.
Will you have a, are you anticipating a cutting back money this year?
Yes, yep, I would look, it, it would probably won't be to the extent that it has been, it's been going down each year, just just the reality of things, costs are going up and, uh, expenses are going up and budgets are staying the same, no fault of, you know, no fault of anybody, but, uh, that's the reality, so it's prob, I, I have noticed over the last two, three years, it's been a steady decline from what it has been, but I would certainly anticipate, short of being thrown a major curveball, that we would, yes.
And some of that in the past was because you didn't have enough officers on major investigations, and now you're, you're well-staffed.
Yeah.
That helped.
Anyone have anything else for Dan?
Nope.
Sorry, I'm. A lot more.
So it's okay?
Yeah, no, I, I appreciate you getting your time, and if anybody, if anybody think of anything, shoot me, give me a phone call, whatever.
You wanna review the bike, uh, so the city of decor has their own police force, Kelver and Oshin have part, part-time that they do on their own, and then they pay for the county half of the deputy. The other five communities pay dollar a year for us to provide their law enforcement. So, I don't know if that's anything that's ever gone anywhere, but.
So, yeah, so we get a, other than, uh, so we have no twenty-eighty with the city decor, um, they have a full-time police department, like Ben said, we get around, uh, I'll call it a round number, it, it's a flip, it's a, the number changes every year, it goes up a little bit every year because we base it off fifty percent of the wage and benefit package of our top paid deputy, and that's based off twenty hours a week in Kelmer and Oshin, that they split that collectively, so we are con, our twenty-eighty is with Kelmer, they turn around and maybe basically sub that out to Oshin, and we have a collective twenty hours a week that we give and patrol time to Kelmer and Oshin. They're getting a good deal because they get way more than that, but, um, but that's the minimum, and I call it twenty hours a week, it actually, the contractor, the twenty-eighty is written, the agreement is written, um, thousand forty hours a year. Reason I wanted that is because there's some weeks, if we were there, we might be there a lot, there's some weeks, maybe we wouldn't be, and I wanna get credit for those hours collectively, so it's an average of twenty hours a week is what the thousand forty is based off of. Um, so what Ben's getting at directly, so that leaves five other towns that are, um, we're getting a, a grand total of five dollars a year for the other five towns combined, um, and a buck a year.
You wanna revisit that?
Um, I, it's something we could look at, I'm, I'm torn both ways on it, because I do look at that they pay, so we're not giving them anything more than we give county rural people, so where I'm looking at is, whatever we do, I wanna be able to explain it. I, I don't, I, I don't wanna just throw darts at it, not be able to explain exactly how we got there with Kelmer and Oshin, I can directly, easily explain exactly the dollar amount we got to. Those five other towns, um, it's not, it's cut and dry, because where I struggle is if the, if the average county resident that lives out in a rural area comes up to me and says, um, or excuse me, if, I'm gonna, I'm gonna flip this, if somebody in one of these towns comes up to me and says, what service are you giving us in addition to what you're giving someone who lives in a rural area, my only truthful answer is nothing.
So why even the five dollars total?
Because, uh, you go ahead.
That was put into place about fifteen years ago because state law requires the cities to provide law enforcement, so they have to have a contract in place with somebody to provide law enforcement.
It checks the box to be in compliance with state law, that they are not sitting there with no law enforcement.
The thing I would point out is that there are times like whether it's a annual festival or due to whatever business establishments or in some of those communities, that you maybe do spend more time in some of the. Yeah, or, yeah, Fourth of July at Spillville or something, where you're spending more time there than you would out at, by my house in Glendale, Toshia.
Yeah, the, the reality. You can look at population density, wherever population is more dense, reasonably, there's gonna be more calls to that area, and again, I, I, I wanna be clear, I am not opposed to the idea of charging some more. Um, I just want to be open and transparent on the conversation of the pros and cons. Ben's exactly right, um, wherever you got more of a population density, where you have establishments, businesses, people just living there, you're naturally, we're gonna get called there more, and, uh, our calls and stats would, would reflect that. On the flip side, we're going to Baroque.
I just say Baroque.
We got Laura Days in Baroque, we're up in Bluffton, uh, half the summer, we're up in the Bluffton area.
Like rendezvous, Laura Days, you can think of others, spill of fireworks, are you there for safety and traffic control? And if it's also traffic control, should they work into their budgets for their festival a piece for that, to pay for that, or how does that work?
So the only thing that we're there for directly, like I'll take rendezvous days, for example, the only thing that I'm aware of that we, um, that we are doing specifically for rendezvous days, is they call us every year for a five K run walk. Thing that they do Saturday morning, it takes about an hour of our time and we're gone. So, other than that, it's just, I, I put out a memo, whenever there's a town festival anywhere, I put out a memo, um, that, uh, hey, uh, rendezvous days is happening, uh, Oshin Fest is happening, Laura Days, um, Fourth of July in Bluffton's a, a big deal, obviously Spillville. We do increased patrols as we normally would any other place, but as far as is, is I wouldn't be able to articulate that Fort Atkinson is calling us and saying, we want a deputy here for the duration of rendezvous days. They haven't and they don't, and frankly, we don't have a deputy there. We, I would say we have increased patrols, we have extra patrols, but now, conversely, when Oshin has their, I'm pointing to Dan, because he lives there, um, he's on the council, uh, when we, when, when, when Oshin has their fest, we do try to keep a deputy there at least during the key times, now during the day when they're doing, it's kinda hit and miss, and there's some face painting and minor events going on, no, we're not always there the whole time, but once it gets to the grand parade, then we're doing dedicated traffic control for a few hours, once they get to the concert, where obviously we have the crowds of people coming, the, the natural things that go with the concert that might involve law enforcement, count, go up, yeah, we are dedicating to there, but the difference is that is in our twenty-eighty, that requires us to at least keep a deputy on staff.
Counts towards your ten, the thousand forty hours.
Yes, yeah, that, and plus it counts towards those hours, and I think there's a clause, I'd have to go back and review, I wasn't prepared to talk on that in detail right now, but I'd have to go back and review it, but I think it is the only opening or out we have, if we would get a call of bad crash or something of significance where it allows us to get pulled away without being in viol, without being in branch of contract.
Well, I just remember years ago, you guys were approached for, it was either a tractor ride or a UTV ride.
Attention, when I would not give them traffic.
Right.
Yeah, um, that was a WMT tractorcade that was privately sponsored, and they were making.
To the community, it's private versus nonprofit.
Exactly, anything that is public, we try to offer a service within reason where we can. Anything where somebody's making a profit, we turn them down. We tell them to, uh, they can call nine-one-one, I can, if they're having a big private event, I will let my deputies know that, hey, um, Ben's hosting a huge family reunion at his house, five hundred people come in, and he wanted some extra patrols past his house. I'll let them know, but we are not that it's happening just because, you know, it's information, but I do not feel tax-supported funds should pay for private events, and, um, I feel the same way, um, about, uh, political events, um, no matter who comes to town, fifty percent of the people probably aren't voting for them. So, it's a slippery slope for us to get involved in that, all, so we do the same thing, hey, this candidate's coming or that candidate's coming. If you wanna make an extra pass, if there's gonna be a big crowd, do it, stop in, poke your head in, let you know we're paying attention, but we're gone again. We're not doing dedicated security for them because I don't feel it's a proper use of tax funds.
And it's like in Oshin and Kelmer, the sheriff's department won't write citations on city ordinances.
Yep, correct.
That's where Jill comes in, that part, that's why Oshin has a twenty-eighty with Kelmer.
Yep.
So we can have our city ordinances enforced.
Yep, yep, and, and that system honestly works, I think, pretty well, because the city ordinances are getting forced, Joe was around during the day to take care of city functions, where the other cities, um, and some not liked it, but they've called us and they might have a city ordinance violation, we'll go down, you know, if they call and say, hey, whatever it is, we'll, we'll try to give them a basic service of handling it informally, but if it comes to actually filing a city ordinance, we don't do that. And, uh, um, that's something they have to work through their city attorney on. So, so I know we probably didn't get to the heart of what Ben brought up, but.
I just was trying to fill the other rest of the time, there's something that was, that people need to know that it's.
Yeah, it definitely has come up, Ben and I have discussed it several times, it'd obviously be increased revenue to the county, it would be on, at the expense of the city, so I mean, it's a shift of money, but nonetheless, um, I think there's an argument to be made why we could charge certainly more than a dollar, but I also um, want to be fully prepared for the people who are paying attention and are willing to ask the hard questions and go, okay, so what are you giving me versus what they're not giving me, and, or versus, what, what am I getting versus what they're getting, what are we not getting versus what they're getting, and right now, that'd be a little bit of a tap dance for me, and that's why I've never jumped on that too hard, because they're all paying county taxes already. Yeah, so, so I just.
I did bring it up in support of it, I just brought it up so you could talk about it, see, so that everyone's on the same page, and I think.
You know, it's pretty soon down the road, these incorporated towns, what, few of them are left, we're gonna say, hey, if you're gonna keep charges, we'll, unincorporate you, we don't have to worry about this.
And that's.
I mean, that's another point of view to look at it, I mean, it's.
Yeah, it's been a discussion down.
They got more pressure on their budget, well, we can't.
Yeah, it's. Well, and that's where, where, uh, you know, yeah, it'd be, it'd be money into our coffers, so to speak, but it's coming directly out of our own residence, and so I, I wanna just be mindful, the whole thing, and to your point, Mark, um, uh, this was brought up even at the, we had the state sheriff's conference a couple of weeks ago, and this is a big issue, everybody's going, how are you handling these small, you know, obviously the unincorporated towns are not an issue, but how are you handling these small incorporated towns, that you could be looking anywhere from towns of forty, fifty people to a couple hundred, whatever, and it's all over the map, there is no consistency, and even contract towns like in Kelmer and Oshin, there is no consistency, how many things being done, some are being handled per capita, some are being, some are getting billed per call, some are being billed per hour, some are on a flat rate like we're doing. I will say, when I listen to the other people around the state talk about how they're handling these contract towns, at least from a. I will say, when I listen to the other people around the state talk about how they're handling these contract towns, at least when it comes to Kelmer and Oshin. I, I think uh ours is way cleaner and I think we have by far the best system as far as the other towns that are paying a buck. It's all over the map and I just wanna make sure what we're doing is fair and we can explain how and why we got to that number and right now, I don't know a way that we would do that.
Yeah, I think ours. I shouldn't say, but I believe last year was thirty thousand.
Yep, sounds about right. Yep, yep, that'd be, because that would be. About half of what the overall. Yes, I think our bill to them was probably around, I think I say it, it's public record, I mean, I think it was around fifty-five thousand.
If you had to hire a full-time.
Well, and that's what it used to have with them when, while we retired that time. I was not on the city council at that time, that's when, when they looked into just sharing and it's worked out well.
Yeah, it's way cheaper than what. Any town is gonna even touch a police officer for.
Squad car there.
Oh, well, then you gotta look at, then you gotta look at. These small towns across the, the state of Iowa, probably across the country, when you get these small towns, they're hiring these. Frankly, young people, very new, right out of the academy with very little experience, so. And then they're getting certified, they're getting trained up and they're moving on to a sheriff's office, so they got a revolving door of expense, we're doing it this way, saves these towns. That money and that revolving door, they got the depth and resources of sheriff's office and there's benefit to us doing it because. You guys in Kelmer and Oshin are paying for half of a deputy that we're. Everybody's no secret, we're using them elsewhere too, so.
It's like Kelmer signed the twenty eighty with the county because they, they always had two officers on duty and then they got sick of that revolving door.
I was one of them. I was one of them, so that's where I started, so. Yeah, so I can tell you, it does happen. Alright, well, thank you, appreciate it. Thanks so much. Yep, take care.
Next item on the agenda, Doug Drew or County Sanitarium with his budget. Good morning, Doug.
Good morning, Doug.
Though I did not change my budgets from last year in the year before, this is the third year I. Get it where it's at, it's pretty much at its quo, pretty much the same. Usually they're plus or minus five thousand dollars, I know with the state. It's in revenue, um, I did go to the board of health last week. Proved the. Budget, looked at the budget, last year's numbers were, I did a hundred and eighty-four water tests in the county. Uh, nine wells got plugged, I issued fifty-five septic permits, twenty-six well permits. And there were forty-one time and transfer inspections done, properties have been sold.
Where do those numbers sit with the average?
Water testing's up, it continues to climb and the septics were up also. Thirty-seven. Water tests. This last. Yeah, this, this year alone. Just since July, I've done a total of, I think, ninety-seven. Which is off the charts. If it stays that way, it'll be the most I've ever done in twenty-eight years, so. Water testing continues to uh increase every year.
Yeah, ninety-seven water tests, forty with chloroform bacteria positive, ten E coli and five nitrate, so that's. Last month's with thirty-five tests.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's become a full-time guy, just water testing.
I think as the community gets more and more educated.
They see articles in the news or whatever and the phone rings and. Uh, we don't charge the grant, so.
Not asking you that because I might increase it some more.
Yeah, um, so about once a calendar year, I'll do a free water test at a property. So yeah, that's about it, pretty much the same.
Folks pick up uh the strips at your office if they wanna do their own or?
No, um, sometimes people call and they don't want you coming out to their property, that's fine. Um, I do offer the kits, they can pick up the kits. Uh, run it to the state lab, that's who I use and they pay, I believe it's forty-three dollars, they put a check in there, so.
I don't know if anyone has anything else for Doug. Thanks for the, that was good.
Thank you.
Consent agenda?
If your licenses for Highland General Store, Wildberry Winery. That's what I have for consent, little check.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion in second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor, say aye. Those polls, same sign. As is unanimously.
But I see, I can't remember your other papers, if you wanna look at that really quick. The county farm lands. We took the lease bids last week, put that one together, the one pager. Twenty-seven in the top left corner. So one side shows the expenses, we have, I put a lot of money in there for maintenance at the, sometimes it's fencing or. Whatever it is, we sometimes have a little bit of maintenance and then we, the property taxes that we pay for leasing it out. And backside shows the. Revenue from the. You just approved last week after getting bids. I called them and it's to the end of the desk waiting.
Yeah, he did call me and it said, I, I would check.
Yeah, I left a choice message. Be notarized, so I can't just. If he doesn't mind stopping yet. Unless maybe he didn't get them.
In quick committee board? The social service committee, C S S. Will be actually, I think, our final meeting on Thursday. Close the bank accounts and systematic certifying things, I think. That'll be turned over to the larger state entity. Well, it already has been.
Got housing trust fund and behavioral health this week and Winshi County Development is Thursday.
That's Thursday.
Not sure we'll make it back in ten, legislative forums at People Brewery, I think we got time to make it.
Alright, ten o'clock, next item on the agenda, the ones that color and historical preservation commission funding request. Good morning.
I think you all know, actually. Well, we're asking for a funding quest for twenty, uh, two thousand twenty-six, twenty-seven, it'll be the same amount as last year. And we're gonna project, we're, we're gonna try and, we're gonna do several things this year, we figured with the. Two hundred and fiftieth anniversary of our nation, we'll have a one-day workshop. And this is the first time ever, we're thinking of getting all the local organizations together for the workshop. Our county, uh, our county preservation, decor, historic preservation, D G A, decor, genealogy. And Winshi County Historic Site, among others, and have a one-day event talking about prehistory, early Indian history and so forth. For Winshi County, so this is all on conceptual stage, but we thought that would be a good way of getting everybody together. Talking about our early history of the county. And then we also will have finished the, the tour guide of barns in Winshi County, it should be done. Uh, late this spring, according to the Bear Creek Archaeology, and we'll have a presentation on that too about probably. The top, well, we'll have to decide how many barns will show in Brooklyn, but we'll be selective. Uh, and the other thing we're doing is that we're gonna put on our website. There's a organization called the Greater Winshi County League, I don't think you've heard of it. Now, some, it started in thirty to early forties and they. Did uh. Township by township, listed all the historic sites and markers for the county, so. We're having somebody digitize it, so then we'll put on a website so everybody can access it, it's. Lot of stuff are like abandoned towns, uh, you name it, it's just full of, chock full of history, so we thought that'd be good for doing it this year too. So what we're gonna do is use that two thousand dollars towards these projects for the two hundred and fiftieth anniversary. We'll keep four hundred dollars for education, like we've done in the past, two hundred dollars for. Uh, office supplies, equipment, so forth. And also, I'm gonna just pass this around, one of the most latest projects we did is an offshoot of the uh. Uh, workshop or conference we did down German American Museum in St. Lucas, this one about the Ho-Chunk Indians, a sub-agency. And school, the Turkey River, Ho-Chunk Turkey River Indian Reservation. And we did take the liberty of, I did of finding these old photographs of the site. And I had a friend colorize them, but you, you keep that in our files, can you saw, I'll just pass that around.
You have a presentation on this coming up?
Yeah, for genealogy in uh February, late February. And the German Art Museum got a grant of ten thousand dollars and they're gonna be putting up. Markers around Winshi County, Fayette County and the area where the Ho-Chunk settlements and the school was. They're in, and getting that done.
How many sites are there?
Oh, I think they're gonna mark about eight. You know, where, where the uh spring was and where the Ho-Chunk school was. And uh, you know, and also the world's smallest church where they moved that log house. That was built in the era when the military built it for the Indian school. So, um, we had a hundred and seventy, we, we collaborated with. The German Art Museum, we have a hundred and seventeen people that attended it, so it was well received and we had the uh. The president or the, the uh John Greendier came and spoke and their preservation officer. Uh, also came and, and uh spoke at the event. Bill Quackenbush. It's uh, and they were very interested in, in of course, all the areas that the Ho-Chunk were moved to from Wisconsin to Iowa to Minnesota. Dakota Center, I think they ended up in Nebraska. So. But anyway, uh, any questions? Oh, Ashley, would you like to talk about the annual report that?
Set the draft out so they had a chance to look at it.
Great, well, and that's due at the end of February, but we always like to hop on it if we can before the end of our, you know, the year to get it done for the holidays. Um, but as, if you were able to check it out, we're welcome to take any corrections or additions or changes, um, but we wanted to get. That to you well in advance to review, um, but yeah, I would say we had a good active year as we seem to, we're probably one of the most active. Um, historic preservation commissions in the state, so, yeah, thanks a lot to Steve's leadership.
I was just stoning, I was sitting at a concert honoring Dave Moore and his music and he has a song about the Eli brothers. Looking into it, some fun songs together.
Any questions in general, uh, we'll be, you know, keeping it posted on as these events, so you're aware of it. And any future publications will bring copies here.
I gotta hand it to Steve, that uh document he did on the Ho-Chunk is very, very nicely done. That, he gave me an advanced copy of it and I was, it's really delightful, I hope you all get a chance to look at it. And a question for Ben, do we need to have a motion to approve the C L G report for it to be filed?
There, there was only a draft, we'll do that in January.
Well, we, I, I, what I've been doing is just having it printed through the print shop of Luther. And they're about, uh, colored ones are about six bucks a piece, I mean, and for people who want them, I, I just do it because.
I would like to have a copy, so do I get ahold of you or the print shop at Luther?
I'll tell you, I brought an extra copy. Make sure, I, I did two sets. Some people only like black and white, they're the purists for archives and others like color, but I, I'll, I can. I'll bring this by and just leave them here. Would everybody want a copy of those supervisors? I can do that.
No, I do.
Yeah, I'll buy one.
Well, no, no, I mean, I, I, we're well enough, I'll just donate. That's within the legal standards, they aren't that expensive. That's in the public, the library scene, so.
I will say that the colorization that Steve had done on those black and white photographs, it's amazing the difference if you compare the black and whites. To the colorization, the amount of detail it's able to be picked up. It's uh, it, it's an extremely well-done document, I gotta hand it to Steve and the team, they did a marvelous job.
And the colorization, do you do that in historical? Matching up of color on.
Well, you know, it's all part of it's, our technician, but A I does a lot of it too. And uh, uh, it's pretty accurate amazingly, but uh, it's on a hundred print. Yeah, it, for the public, they want help, you know, I, I talked to a couple of people from the curatorial and archival thing, they said. Can't do that, it's really black and white, but if you're general public, you like color, so that's why we do that.
It's such an interesting piece of our history here.
I think next, this coming year, I'm gonna try and get, if I can find a typist to do it. Is do a companion piece of this to uh the fort. Because the Ho-Chunk School, the sub-agency was, the fort was built for them, you know, to protect them, them from the Sioux and. Sacks and box and so. But no, I mean, that, that can stay at your, I mean. Okay, and I'll bring some more, just drop them off with Ben, he can hand them out.
So how many years do you have in though on historic preservation commission?
I mean, oh, well, we just lost a person that's been there for thirty years, Roger Bergen. And uh, I, I'm one of the, I'm the only founding member of that one that started in eighty-six. So, you know, I'll probably go with my boots on. But I'm thinking, well, he's, he's, he was on for thirty years and this would be my fortieth. But it's been fun, if, if it wasn't fun, I wouldn't be doing that.
And we definitely wanna thank Roger for that, his dedicated service and all that he contributed to the group, because it's, it's been a. A lot of loving service.
Alright, ten ten, next item on the agenda is Tricia and Martin from Northeast Iowa Community Action with the funding request and general relief budget. Good morning.
Oh, awesome, Roger was a transit driver for a water agency for years and hours and years, so we know him too. Yeah, okay. Thank you, I know everybody, um, it's been several years since I stopped by and talk about our services and we do have a funding request. It is the same as previous years, but what I also like to do is just give you sort of a year in review. Of the community impact and services that we provided to Winshi County residents throughout this past year, so we all know each other, I'm Tricia Wilkins. I am in my seventeenth year now with the agency. And I've been serving as the CEO for about seven years. And our mission for the agency is to advance community development and improve social economic conditions for individuals and families with limited resources. We do this by providing quality family services, advocacy, education, and we have many, many, many partnerships with other agencies. Um, we'll talk about this a little bit more in a minute, but we are mostly federally funded, which made it a challenge this year. With the government shutdown, we we have about seventy-five, seventy-eightish amount that we rely on federal funds for our entire twelve million dollar budget with the agency. So when decisions are made there, it makes significant impact to our operations and how we move forward. But also because of supportive cities, counties, individuals and business donors. Um, that helps make up and leverage some of the other funds that we need when we run short on those federal funds. I do always bring up funding structure when I go and have these conversations because it is important to highlight the economic impact we know that our agency has in your communities. It helps those who are living in your communities who might be struggling, but we also provide lots of businesses to our local vendors, utilities, landlords, mechanics, hotels, grocers. And so we know that we make a big difference in a lot of different ways. So talking specifically for Winshie County, we assisted and, oh, I have these. I don't know. I think we sent them in the mail. I'm not sure if they made it, but I brought extra copies. You guys can take a look. I'll reference that sort of in the conversation. So when you look at the data sheet, so Winshie County, we served eight hundred and eighty-six individuals with just over a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars worth of services. And this is direct. We're tracking and talking about direct financial assistance. One thing I always point out too is that that dollar amount does not include our service specific programs. Transit Head Start are two biggest programs that we have. That is not included and we all know the operations have a cost to them of what we're doing. We do also employ twenty-nine employees that live and reside in Winshie County. Just pulling out a little bit bigger, a little wider net, our agency and program year twenty twenty-five, we served over nine thousand individuals in all seven of our counties with almost three point three million in services across the seven county area. Um, and then when you kind of take a look when we talk about our programs, so low income home energy assistance, we we call it LAHEEP. This program, as most know and are familiar with, it provides financial assistance for a portion of home heating costs for individuals and families who qualify. It also can help repair or replace a non-working furnace. This is a federal program, a large federal program in the country. We are right in our busy period right now with our fiscal year twenty-six LAHEEP program. So last year we concluded on April thirtieth and we provided assistance to three hundred and forty-three households in Winshie County. In addition to totaling a hundred and eighty-five thousand. Yeah, that is just for LAHEEP. I'm sorry, I with our assistance in Winshie County total, pull that back a little bit. I think I said a hundred and eighty-five. That is actually three hundred and eighty thousand, four hundred and ninety-nine of all financial assistance. The one eighty-five I referenced is just specific to LAHEEP. So I think I misquoted that earlier. And then we move on to crisis assistance. So this is emergency needs that arise for families. In our policy, they can include food for our pantries, which Winshie County does have a food pantry. It's right in our, with our office at the Smith Building. But also financial assistance for some utility disconnects, maybe past due rent or eviction notice, car repairs, medication, transportation. Um, we operate this all year round, but it is mostly funded locally. We've been fortunate enough to apply for Community Foundation, United Way. And depending upon each county, it has a different level of funding. So this year in Winshie County, we were able to help a hundred and six households with just over fifty-two thousand of financial support for that. Weatherization, another program, we address health and safety in addition to providing energy efficient improvements with households that qualify. It's all residential homes that we're working with. The work we often do is insulation, LED lighting, repair replacement of furnaces or non-working appliances as well.
Is there a limit for household?
Um, there is, but oftentimes, because with weatherization, you have to do what it's what is called for. So when they go in and evaluate, we we can't say you hit your twelve thousand max. We can sometimes get a waiver, so we'll go over that by the state to do the whole work. If it's significant enough, then we sometimes have to walk away and defer the home. But also we work with the Northeast Iowa Trust Fund where sometimes they might be able to apply. Like if they have a leaky roof or holes in the roof, we're not, we can't weatherize the house. It's not going to do it any good. So if they can apply and get that assistance, then they can come back and might be able to weatherize their home too. So some bundling of services. Um, Head Start, we currently operate with ten classrooms for our whole service county. We have one classroom here in Winshie County right in decor in the Sunflower Building. It is our second year at Sunflower and the staff love, love, love the 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 classroom that they have. It's really nice. Head Start had a very difficult year this year. We lost nearly six hundred thousand dollars in state funds. And this was not anything to do with the federal fund concerns that we had going forward. It was specific to federal funds that were designated by the state as wraparound services. And they had the state determine they wanted to do something different with this funding. And so it pulled away from all of the Iowa Head Start agencies and we lost our ability to offer before and after school care. So we used to be able to do six to six. So parents who are going to school and working qualify, they could drop off their children early prior and then leave them later if they got off work later than a normal school day. Um, we no longer can do that. So we and Head Start will offer school day bus to bus services. So eight to three to eight to three. Um, so that was tough. We lost, we had three staff in every classroom. We lost that third person was funded by the wrap service. So we lost them. So we are down to two staff in each classroom. Um. Family Development and Self-Sufficiency, also known as FADs. This is a program. It's it's a state program. It's got some federal dollars in it as well. It is intended to address families' basic needs, improve their children's well-being and help them develop a career path. It's very intensive. Home visiting and really helps families have an advocate that maybe have never had one before, and it helps teach them the skills to be able to advocate for themselves too. Transit, we all know transit. Most people have seen the Earl buses. That sucks. We operate that program as well. Um, we provide rides for, we do public transit, but specific rides, we do a lot for school. Head Start children, dialysis patients, medical runs, other essential needs, maybe somebody just needs to run some errands, go to the grocery store. Um, a fun piece that we that was a little bit different this year, we did have the opportunity to be involved with a public shuttle when the Lansing Bridge had their closure. We provided the shuttle from around where the city, the city of Lansing is to where the water taxi was. We're not continuing to do that. But it was about a week or two of us being able to provide that. And we had a significant number of rides that we were able to provide. So it worked out. It was a really good community collaboration addressing a need that we really knew was existing at the time. So in transit's program year in Winshie County, it was fifty-three thousand, two hundred and forty-one total rides, which is double what we do in our next highest county. And the reason for that is is decor is busy. We have in-town rides, but we also have a great partnership with Hometown Taxi where they, um, they they're kind of an arm of the services we're providing. And if we can't provide, we we provide a we provide an amount for that, a supplement, because it helps elderly, individual disabilities get a discount on their rate to be able to take that. So we provide a supplement, but we're able to use all of that ride data to be included in our formula funding. So it helps our federal funding essentially from the state and from the feds. It's it's a great partnership. It's well worth the investment that we put into it and it helps makes a significant difference with those costs to our to our seniors, individuals with disabilities are able to get a ride for a dollar fifty. Those with disabilities are two dollars for a ride and then the general public gets a quarter off their ride too. Um, let's see. Martin's gonna talk a little bit about general assistance. Um, government shutdown, just to say that this year has been a challenge for our agency is an absolute understatement. Um, the beginning of twenty twenty-five, we saw a federal funding freeze that concerned us, but ultimately didn't have an operational impact on us. We talked about Head Start seeing major changes. And then most recently, the government shutdown created environment instability that I have never seen in my seventeen years with the agency. But now that we're back on, we have recently received our FY twenty-six contracts for some of our federal programs. LAHEEP is a big deal because these are not small amounts. When we're assisting over three thousand households, um, those dollar amounts add up and add up and we're talking millions of dollars that we are waiting on to be able to pay vendors. We need this money as well. But we have gotten those contracts. So we're working through that and we're anticipating everything else is going to continue to come through. So fingers crossed that we don't ever have to go back. Um, Martin is here. Do you guys have any questions from me first or?
Housing part?
Yes, housing.
What's the one lease purchase home?
It would have been done, and this is all housing that we've ever done in Winshie County. So it would have been done years ago, probably before my time and I wouldn't be able to speak to exactly where it was, but it would have been a new house that was built and we would have gotten a grant from the state. Um, and then we we own it for a couple of years, rent it to a household that qualifies. Eventually they come and buy it out from us. So we no longer have a piece to it.
Rental.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And they buy it for, they're able to purchase it for a fraction of the cost. So that's what helps them be able to get into that new homeownership for it.
You see, they obviously they have a need for housing. I know it doesn't make you a lot of money. Costs you a lot.
Yeah, there is no, there's no potential way for us to do housing. Because there is not, where we're at now with our housing is that our buildings are getting older and they are costing us a significant amount of renovation. And our rents are need to be affordable and they're controlled, but our expenses are not capped. And so the reserve funding that we have is never going to be enough to do these massive renovation projects. And so we recognize and see the need. But it is an extraordinarily difficult challenge for our agency. It may not be for an agency that focuses entirely on housing, but when we're doing and have our funding going to LAHEEP, Transit, Head Start, to have it only be a small piece is what I have found to be one of the more challenging pieces.
So I'm gonna see going forward, what you do. Getting rid of it?
Probably, yeah, probably. Yep.
So my.
Give them the tuck pointing.
Yeah, and so Will and Mill is is our biggest discussion right now. And we we're looking, I don't know exactly what the tuck pointing, but the entire, which the tuck pointing is the majority of that particular project. We are looking at almost a three million dollar renovation need for that particular building. And to no major surprise, we don't have the money for it. And we have checked with the state. We have looked to see if there's, you know, any any potential funding out there. But and and there is, but it's nothing that can get us even closer.
How many, how many guys?
That's a fifteen unit property. And it's a mix of one bedroom and two more, more one bedroom. Yes.
So when a person buys, say, that home or whatever, do they gotta live there? They can't just live there for five years, turn around and sell?
Oh, are you talking about the lease purchase program? You know, they've all been kind of different over the years, but yeah, it's a, it's like a prorated amount for a certain number of years. And depending upon the year, I think sometimes they've been fifteen years. And so we we do have the responsibility to track the compliance on that for that amount of time. So yep, if they were to live, if they were to purchase it and then they sell it two years later, there's going to be a certain amount of forgivable loan that they're gonna have to pay back. Yeah. And then, but there is a point, maybe fifteen, twenty, whenever they hit that when it's released. So, yeah.
I figured there was some.
Yep, yep. We haven't, we did a lot of lease purchase homes within the last probably five to ten years. And they just, most have all gotten to the point of being able to sell. So we've only just got a handful left right now. Because again, we we take care of the compliance, but the homeowner just kind of comes in and purchased it. Yeah, housing has been one of our biggest and Shirley can attest to the conversations we've had with the board has been one of the more challenging because we certainly recognize the need for it. But to be able to, and again, we're not trying to make money. We need to be able to sustain our operations. And we can't in order, I would be very concerned about our financial stability as an agency if we continue to put that kind of funding in. Yeah.
So the bigger question for the whole county is housing, the need for housing, especially low income housing.
Right.
And we've got to get real creative with some partnerships and investments.
I am a part of the Decorah Jobs Group and I've been to a couple of their meetings and they are really having some very interesting conversations about ideas and projects that sound like they have a lot of promise. So that that was encouraging.
Just to be respectful of the time, we'll keep this.
No, that's fine. We can move it along a little bit later news back. So no problem.
My name is Martin Art. I am been the outreach director for the agency since March. Um, I'm also the general relief director for Winshie County and three others. Um, so I'm just gonna focus on the general relief, Winshie County General Relief. Um, we're asking in twenty-six, twenty-seven budget for the same amount as what we were this year and the last couple of years. Uh, one of the real advantages to us administering the general relief program as part of all of our other programs, like Tricia mentioned, all the crisis funding. Because generally ordinance says that it has to be the funding source of last resort. We're at a real advantage to know what other funding is out there. So like a lot of the things that generally leave cover as far as types of services, we also cover in our crisis assistance programs. And one thing that isn't is the funerals cremations burial. That's very unique to generally leave. But what this allows us is that we're able to utilize those other funding sources because when the person comes in, we know what those are instead of having them do generally. Um, so for example, in fiscal year twenty-five, total spent was four thousand, three hundred and fifty-eight dollars of general relief funds, which assisted thirteen households and twenty-one individuals. So far this year, from July one through the end of November, direct assistance to the to help the clients, all the payments go directly to the vendors, not to the individuals. Has been five hundred and nine dollars and sixty-two cents. But I know because of looking at our crisis, we've gotten other crisis funding in that we were able to utilize for those needs instead of needing to rely on generally. Most of that funding is been used up now for the next fiscal year. So then our amount of utilizing generally pulls up. And looking historically, that's the pattern. The first half is really low because you typically have those other crisis funds to pull from first. And the second half of the fiscal year, the number of payments goes up. So. But yeah, so as far as for fiscal year twenty-six, seven, twenty-seven, because that grant funding is never known, we like to keep it at that twenty-six thousand, seven hundred and four is what we're requesting.
Can you give us without names, of course, give an example of how that was generally requested for family or individual?
Yep, so for last fiscal year, um, three hundred dollars of that forty-three was service continuity. So that's helping someone keep on their electric. Uh, three thousand was for funerals. So that's three funerals that we assisted with. Um, sometimes the family members apply. Sometimes it's the funeral. There was a situation that was right at in June where it was the funeral home we contacted me. They knew the name of the individual and that was about it. There was no family that they had connected. He passed away at the hospital. Um, so they just had the information from the hospital. I worked with the social worker to kind of get the information that I needed. Um. But yeah, without this program, there would be no funding to help get that person, those last, you know, that last respect paid to get him cremated and get the remains interred.
And a lot of what our, as state code says, generally has to be the funding of last resort. And so what we're able to do besides the funerals, because there is no other funding source that pays for funerals, uh, uh, rent or food or utilities, like Martin said, we're gonna be able to, if we have crisis funds or federal or local, we're gonna apply that first before we go to general relief, which is why it's always worked so well for our four counties because we charge eight thousand for Winshie County because we're paying for food pantry operations as well. And then we save a significant amount on your program budget because you're not a staff. And so um, makes a big difference when we might be able to help with some of our funding that we provide too. So just like it's a bundled, again, a bundled service. You one stop shop using our resources as efficiently as possible.
Any other questions?
How long have you been doing our general relief? I know the answer.
Oh, that's right.
I'm just wondering for people.
Before me and I, John Loxton was the chair. Before me, and I, John Loxton was the chair that talked about it. I think when I, I think it was when Mary and I were sort of transitioning, and I came with her to this meeting, would you say it's fifteen years?
Well, whatever it is, yeah.
Yep. That makes sense. And I think you were the first, maybe?
I think we were the trend setter.
Yep, you were, Winneshie County, yep, and then, I don't know the order, but we've also got Howard, um, Chickasaw and Fayette, and I think Chickasaw, because I remember when that, when Chickasaw came out, that must have been the latest one. But that's been several years too.
The board at the time said, because we had, we had our General Relief was in the office in the courthouse, and so we had a full-time person, so they said we were spending forty thousand a year to drive four thousand of relief.
That's right.
Yeah.
Right.
So why?
Yeah.
It just was a way for win-win for everybody.
Yeah, and we were, and we always, you know, encourage the counties, we don't wanna do anything while you have staff, but when you have a change, if you have a retirement or somebody leaves, and then you have an open position, let us come in and talk to you about it, because it might be the perfect time to switch to our, and that's, I think, what's happened with, with everybody too. Any other questions?
I could say, you know, sitting on this board with you guys for the last several years, it's the amount of work that's done out of your offices for this community and the wider regional community is awesome.
Thank you.
So thank you.
And they're fundraising right now, if anybody wants to make a charitable contribution, reminder, yeah, I would love it, thank you.
This seems like a lot, we do a lot of work, but we're not a good guy. Your agency wasn't fair, because it's intense labor and money.
Yep, yep, and making a big difference to be able, even if it's, uh, you know, helping somebody keep their electricity on or they're gonna be evicted, and like, we can provide help for the next thirty days to give them opportunity and time to figure out what their plan is gonna be, it's, it's a lifeline.
You're seeing your numbers of those needs going up.
Yes.
The money is not going up, it's like.
But the need is going up, yes.
Yeah, let's just hope it doesn't go down anymore.
And we can handle it going up maybe every once in a while, too, an increase at the federal level, that would be.
I understand that.
No, I mean, the, I don't mean the funding going up, I mean, the need, the need is like, that's a very significantly.
Yes.
And that ain't true for a lot of the organizations, but.
That's right. And that is why, and we still aren't busting a budget for generally, but that is why you might see a little bit of an increase in utilizing generally. Because needs are going up, but we do not have that kind of crisis funds that we used to have, and so you start to see that split, but we're still sitting okay. Okay, thank you guys.
Thank you, thank you.
Have a good day.
You too.
Uh, we'll push the two miscellaneous items back to the end of the agenda. Uh, next on the agenda, Paige Everly from River View Center on funding request.
I'm not Paige Everly. I'm a therapist with River View Center up here in these counties. I've talked to her before, yep. Paige was on her way here and, I didn't think that, um, I have flat tire.
Remind us of your name.
Mindy Myers.
Thank you.
Yeah, so Paige had all intentions of being here, and then about an hour ago said, I don't think I'm gonna make it there, but I should go, go ahead and talk about what we do. She said that all of you have the funding request letter that was sent out, so I didn't bring multiple copies, right? And so I'm also not, I assume you can read, so I don't need to read through every stat and every detail. But if there is a thing that you have a question about, I should be able to answer it. Um, the part that I usually do is the, what does it look like at River View Center, right? Because people think, oh, sexual assault advocacy and therapy services. But sometimes that feels like they come into our office, it's at nine to five, we provide an hour of service at a time, that sort of thing, like you might see it at behavioral health, that's not what we do. Um, Winneshie County is near and dear to my heart, I live here, I raised three kids here, they're all off in college now. And so I just, I love the community, I love how the community supports all of its efforts. I know that you guys have been extremely supportive of River View over the years, so, um, so I guess, in looking at the funding requests, are there things that you have questions about? I know it talks about the number of clients that we've served in Winneshie County over the last, um, year, forty-nine clients. It's got the percentage breakdown of disabilities, homeless, immigrants, anything that fits into that. Um, so have you looked at it ahead of time, do you think you have questions?
But I don't remember, I did read through it, and we also saw an increase in services, the needed services to your offices.
Yes, so we have fourteen counties in Iowa and two in Illinois that we provide services in, and there's been an increase across the board through all the counties. Um, I don't believe, we don't believe that it's because there's more sexual assault, we just believe that the information is getting out to more people and more people are coming forward and disclosing and requesting services, that's what we believe is happening. Maybe there's an increase in the actual sexual assaults, but typically when we see an increase, it's because people feel safer coming in, which means we're doing a really good job with our outreach, which is a part of the funding request, where can we be where the people are? So an example of that is we have office hours every week, um, at NICC and at Luther. And so those students are much more likely to stop by where we are on campus than just us putting a flyer in the bathroom, which we do, um, and hoping that they might get to us. So we try to go to where the people are, sometimes we're at the hospital, sometimes we're at the clinics, maybe we're doing a lunch and learn, things like that. Um, but we partner pretty well with most of the community members, which I can talk about a little bit.
And Winneshie County, your offices where for public?
Our office is, um, at ten fourteen South Mill Street. It's the little strip mall that has like the laundromat and choice of, yeah, we're around the side where Department of Corrections was, so. Um, it was kind of interesting when we moved in there, because it was all, it looked like Department of Corrections had been there, but we wanted people to come in and feel comfortable having therapy. So there was a lot of like paint and flooring, or like a lot of fun, soft, fuzzy things on the wall, and, because it just looked really scary. Um, it's also why the cell phone reception isn't great, because I think those are lead walls, I'm not sure what, um. But yeah, so we, we have that space here in town, and then we use spaces throughout the county so that people don't have to drive to us if they can't. Budgets are pretty tight for most of the families that we work with, trying to get to us every week, if you live, you know, I don't know, in, in Fort Atkinson, or if it's a Turkey Valley student, and we're gonna expect the parents to get them to us, that's, that's a lot to ask. So we do, we use libraries, like if they have study rooms, we use churches, the schools, all of our schools are wonderful about just, yep, whatever time you wanna come, we'll find you space, it'll be great. Um, they don't ask questions, they just, uh, if you're coming. So without those partnerships, we probably wouldn't be able to do what we do. Um, other types of partnerships we have are medical, all of our hospitals, um, Department of Human Services, or I guess it's HHS now, we get a lot of referrals from them. Um, we didn't see that so much in the past, but we're seeing much more of a partnership and some, even some friendships there, um. Do you know about our SART teams, Sexual Assault Response Teams? Those are in all of our counties, so it's medical, law enforcement, prosecution, and advocates. And we get together every month, and we talk about ways to do this better, what policies and procedures needed to change, how can we go back and fix something, what happened over the last month that, that we thought didn't go well? And so that has been a huge improvement, um, to get that kind of uniform response across all our counties. So I think all of those things is why we're seeing increase in calls. Because we're, we're, we're working with all of those folks, we're in all of those places. If we just stayed in our little office silo, we'd probably see ten people, but.
Well, sexual assault has been in the forefront for the entire year.
Yes.
So I think that's also making more people have the courage to seek help.
Absolutely, and, and feeling, um, I will have, I've had a number of clients come in that say that they're feeling triggered, that they're having flashbacks and nightmares that they hadn't had in years, because of what's happening in the political climate. And so, um, we are seeing an increase with that as well. And clients that continue to feel triggered by it, that just say, I don't have a safe space to talk about this except in here. And so, and we do that, um, because we can't, we do what they want to do. Um, we also have physical things, so we have a, a small food pantry, we have clothing, we have Christmas gifts, like we have actual, just like, let me give you this. Um, if they're in an emergent situation, we don't have our own housing, we work close with Cedar Valley Friends and Family for the shelter. Or we can do a couple nights in a hotel, just to figure out.
To get them away.
Where can you go from here, yeah. To get them away, to get them, they can call some family members, you know, have more time to have a well-thought-out plan. So those are more tangible things that we can do, besides the services we provide, um. Kind of a start to finish, do you wanna know what kind of the case would look like? Maybe, maybe not. Um.
I think you should for the community stake, yes.
Go briefly, I'll just do a brief. And so hospital call, the middle of the night, whoever's on call goes out. I went out in the last blizzard to go to Cresco. It doesn't matter if it's a blizzard, you just, it took me a little longer to get there. Um, we provide all of the advocacy onsite, advocacy onsite, the hospitals cannot start their forensic evidence collection until we are onsite. Um, then we kind of walk through the whole process, we figure out what they need, what they don't need, you can do as little or as much as you want. Um, I tell them, I don't work for law enforcement, I don't work for the hospital, I work for you, so tell me what you need. So then we set up services, okay, we're gonna follow up with you on the next Monday. Maybe we get some advocacy going around a no contact order, uh, housing site situation, what other things can we apply for? Get that going, then they decide maybe they'd like to do therapy, they start meeting with me, that can be longer term. Um, and then throughout the process, if there's a court proceeding, a change in the no contact order, whatever, the advocate keeps going alongside of me. So they're doing that stuff, I'm doing this stuff, and as, as the process unfolds, there's a lot of healing that occurs. So that by the time they leave us, they went through all of it, but they've never been alone. And I think that's one of the biggest parts of that. I can just keep talking about my work, or I can just ask you guys if you have questions, so. I'm not the development correct coordinator, but I do the working way, Shakeout me.
Your main offices is out of Dubuque.
Yes, there's Dubuque, Seaplane, Waterloo, Decorah, and then going there in Mount Carroll.
Who is there, how many are in Decorah this year?
Me and two advocates. So one therapist, two advocates, and that, it's, and it's for six counties, but.
Oh.
This is.
It's good then.
We are, and it doesn't look like there's gonna be a lot more funding on the horizon, we have some federal grants. We're a little shaky on those sticking around, so we'll see. There, it's not that they're going away, it's that the number of parameters that have been on them. Yeah, I mean, you can barely buy a candy bar with, with what's, uh, what you're allowed to do, if that makes sense.
As far as outreach, do you meet, what groups do you meet with more regularly? Like, um, local women's sororities, or churches, or student organizations, everybody you can?
Yes, so we do a lot of projects with the Norse, um, students that get sexual assault at Luther. We work, we go to like, um, I'm not gonna think of the right name, like a pastoral council, when the pastors kind of get together, we go and talk with them, we talk with the Rotary Group, um. We have tabling, where we're just kind of there, and we've got things, um, at both of the colleges. And then several of the schools let us come in and do that, like at lunchtime. Um, so that, just pretty much, I mean, anybody could call, we, we train the, the RAs at Luther, like, just about anybody. And we had a student come in for her own sexual assault that said she wouldn't have done that, but because she was an RA, she understood what could, what could happen next, what could be helpful. So even those little seeds that we plant brings that next person to us.
Hope for your work, thanks for the hour. Next item on the agenda, Michael Cootie, County Engineer, what's going on, Department of Health, good morning, Mike.
Good morning. Just dodged the snows for the weekend, huh? For the most part, I think there was some blowing snow under the hair. Yeah, they sent crews out, um, on Saturday morning. Um, not much to report on. So great, there's nothing new this week. Uh, railroad flat car bridge study, uh, I haven't received anything additional other than what I passed on to the board. Subdivision, there's nothing new this week, uh, Corey Hill Road, uh, nothing new this week. Um.
Is that still like this year yet, or?
Not twenty twenty-five, um, but I'm going piece by piece, it's, it's a kind of complicated, um, parcel, so I'm just working on it this morning, to be, to be honest. Um, and then drunk, uh, worked Saturday morning, uh, Ridgeway had one, um, Oshin and Ford. So there's some blowing snow in the south. And then, uh, we have our new sign man, he started the day, he can, is, is, uh, administrative work for benefits and everything else, working with Lynn. Um, and then, uh, Troy Hupden, uh, foreman, uh, announced retirement on Thursday, after twenty-seven years of work with the county. And, uh, we're looking at, say, have a new management structure around his loss.
Do you see that was coming?
Yeah, he's, he's made it known that he's, he's done, um, he's like. He's, uh, he's been very valuable to me, uh, explaining things, so I have. Uh, yes, um, but just as facilitating my learning and how to, you know, explains how, how he does things very beneficial to me in ways that other people haven't, so.
I see that we manage the structures being pursued.
Yes.
Seeing your.
Um.
In the forman, or?
Yes, that's what we're looking at doing, um, and that's kinda, uh, right now, uh, working with superintendent, the idea is that, and this is relaxing on my side as well, a person that we can just send anywhere and that's their job is to go anywhere. And, um, it's, we gotta kind of balance that out with, with the fact that, um, it's a lot of work for just two guys. Um, but, um, it's working with superintendent and Brandon are the foremen, and they both think that they can do it and then are, are really wanting to do that, um, I have.
You wanna just review currently, the structure is?
So the way it happens now is, is, is the superintendent is in charge of District Five. And then the, um, one foreman in the north and then one foreman in the south, foreman in the north is over the uh, Ridgway and, uh, Locust Shop, um, districts, and then the Oshin and, and, uh, Ford districts are another foreman. And the idea here would be, um, we would split this north-south, uh, say nominally, um, Highway Nine would be a dividing line. Uh, and between the foreman and the superintendent, they would split up their, their, um, on work orders and things like that, when we, if there are requests, they would split their duties that way. The big crunch honestly is, is there's no, if, if we get a tough winter, it's gonna be, uh, on-call. Um, when they're on-call for the weekends, there's not gonna be a lot of reprieve, um, that way. So, uh, in that respect, I've already kind of made myself available to dispatch. Um, so I'm gonna try to help out that way, but I, I don't have a class A driver's license and that's sure people want me in a, uh, hand truck. At least to be honest. I have to be honest. Um, so, uh, there's, there, that's kind of a hole that we kind of might need to fill, especially as, as the team might set in, um.
Just for historical reference, there used to be that we had a foreman in every shop. So if it's a superintendent and five foremen, and that's been restructured to have a superintendent, two foremen, and then an assistant foreman each job. And you're talking about now getting rid of one more foreman position, but you won't get rid of a, we still hire another worker.
Hire another worker, we're looking at working with the, um, the union. Originally, I thought it would be a non-union position, but we're looking at, that it'd be someone that would, um, report to, uh, wherever superintendent, foreman, need him to. need him to report at, or her. Um. Is a float position, but the idea with the float position is twofold. Um, I mean, it's because we're doing, um, you know, this pavement patching and things are required at the spot. Uh, that's what the crew needs, and then I need another person. Um, I'm gonna put it on roadside and, uh, you know, kind of help current roadside manager out, and also help the techs out whenever we're busy testing concrete and, and aggregates and things like that, so that's the float position makes sense for the crew and for, for the courthouse, um, in that sense, so that's where you know, it, it took me a little long while to get there because the system I walked into, I thought worked pretty well, and, and, um, I talked to, uh, Nick over at Howard County, talked to, um, another county engineer, Wade Wise, I think you know Wade, talked to, um, talked to Joel about this, so. Um, they, they, you know, it seems to make sense, um, and, and the idea that all five shops have their own foreman is, is kind of antiquated even to them. So that makes me feel better, but again, I liked having the three of them, you know, uh, at the same time, so. This is, I kind of made the decision for longer than I should have probably, but I knew that I had time, um, cause Troy, just talking out with Troy and the crew, that's kind of how it came to my decision. So.
Now you're still hiring an assistant engineer yet?
That will be, uh, I meant. Yeah, in the courthouse, I'm trying to not overstaff, is what I'm trying to not do, is, and, and it's not a we can keep people busy, we can definitely keep people busy, but it's just one of those things where you always can justify more use, let's try to streamline our uses, uh, and be cost efficient. And I, as far as I know, we're not behind on anything, but, um, if you have, if you catch word of anything, please let me know as soon as you can.
We got like a couple of black cops that could be repulsed right now.
That's money, uh, and I can't, that's what I'm trying to say by doing this, so yes, I, I appreciate the humor there, Mark.
Yeah.
Uh, but, yeah, it's, uh.
If that money tree would just shed it off.
Yeah. Over the last week, I got some calls about ice control, and I'm, you know, I'm trying to limit the amount of
Yeah.
the, the gold that I throw on the road. Uh, yeah, and so you might hear some complaints about that, um, but we did, we did send them some out this morning on that, so.
There was social media posts, and just maybe you want to comment, just so everyone hears it publicly, about not, why aren't they putting salt on the gravel roads, cause we don't put salt or sand on gravel roads, period. You do, you will scratch it with a special blade, and then you add gravel sometimes, very sparingly when it's really needed. But that's, you don't do that, period.
Yeah, the sand, they say, well, Alma Key does it, Alma Key, it's their sand for no charge from the, the dredge pit.
Tough to get that, now we have the bridge.
Yeah.
And so it's broad, like, yeah, that.
It's just one of those.
Bridge and get it in a sand pile and.
Are they not able to access it in?
Well, that's, sits across the bridge.
Okay.
That one, I don't know where the other one, but yeah, that one's.
I honestly, I don't know too much about it, so.
Somebody brought that to my tent, we were talking about it, and I said, well, you go across the bridge, get it now.
Yeah, sand on the, on the, it's just, that would be.
So sand is only used on
That's what, that's what.
paved roads and only on like hills and corners and stop sign, yeah, exactly, not, they don't just go out there and spread it.
Just throw down everybody.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, one of the, one of the complaints was that I can only drive twenty-five on the gravel roads, and I'm like, that's just gotta be what it's gotta be, I mean, so that's, um, there's just, there's just not enough money to pay for the amount of rock that we really want, so. Um, that's, it's, I, there's the brakes.
Yeah.
So.
I knew that, but I knew that people were wondering how that worked, and it's got to be like the UPS driver trying to get everybody's Christmas present in their bike.
One more, we need the ice road, then we gotta take it away from something else.
Yeah. And we're, we're, we're one of the few counties that does any kind of ice, I mean, obviously, he does it with the sand, which is not, you know, as good as actual rock, but, but, um, we're one of the few counties that provide ice control, and maybe we're hilly and everything else, but, but it's not something I'm wanting to take away necessarily, so.
I'm gonna suggest that we make a, a revision to the engineer's job description that prohibits, uh, Class A drivers, you know, CDLs.
I, I, I think I might be able to immediately drive the truck in a, in a lot, just not on the road.
You'd have to go to blades, you'd have to go to blade school besides.
Yeah, I, I would like to actually, that'd be kind of fun to run a blade, but it has to be the joystick ones at the rack. Any, any comments that you've heard from the public from me, then, okay.
I've heard appreciation. I'll pass that on.
Thank you. And you appreciate that.
There are copy for me.
I know out by Ben's house, it was, it was not good for a little bit, um, got a couple of comments out there, and he didn't complain to me, so thank you, Ben. Well, thank you.
It's, it's completely ice covered most of the road, most of the gravel, but they were, they were out on Friday, I think it was, with the with the scratching, the blade that scratches.
That's the thing, it's putting sand down, it's roughing it up against to get traction.
But that doesn't get all the way through, and it, you can get some, not till the sun gets a little more direct, will it actually?
Sun plus twenty. All right.
Thanks, Mike. Couple minutes, uh, discuss strategic planning, proposal and timeline.
I think we should hit that again in January, just table that and start that process again in January discussion.
Steve asked me to put this on, so I didn't know.
My comment was, it's, it's gonna take them some time to prepare, and to make some noticing so that we can start it in sometime in January. I think that would be probably a prudent thing to do, so we may want to go ahead and have some action on it just to initiate it being started, cause I think most everyone's in agreement that we can benefit from working on some, some goal setting and planning for a, for a two-year period.
Do we need to take action, or can we just put it up for discussion in January?
I think that gets to shoot the, or one of you could shoot, uh, Aaron that sent the email that I forwarded to you. That talked about what they do and.
Aaron Better.
Yeah, maybe somebody could just say that you do want to proceed and that sometime in January, we should talk about what the timeline is and how to get that going. Do you want me to email him, or do you want, unless one of you works with him?
I have one on the policy board.
Maybe it doesn't make any difference to me who contacts him, but he just needs to be contacted.
Yeah, well, just let him know.
Yeah, yeah. Just so that he can start thinking about getting it going.
I, I don't think we need to necessarily take action on that today, it could be in the first parts of January, is that good with you, Steve?
Yeah, I just, we want to, the longer we delay, uh, that doesn't help us, so we want to get started into next year. And it's good if we can do it in the first part of the year. So I think we need to at least alert them that this is a direction that we're looking very favorable on moving forward with. And that we've got, uh, we want to have a plan in place so that we can proceed.
So we're all in agreement?
Yeah.
I'll put that on, it's just in the minutes as a consensus to get started after the first of the year, and I'll make a contact.
Andy, are you out there this morning?
I am, good morning.
What do you have for us?
Um, not, not much really, I did get a, Steve, I got your email this morning about the MOU with the city, I um, I got some information from Jeff on Friday, and then the detail you provided, we'll get something put together to, to have you look over.
Excellent, thank you, Andy. Well, then FYI, to an FYI for the board, after our meeting, Mark, uh, Paulikin, give a, uh, agreement, we had a meeting with Travis, and so basically the MOU is to give us a memorandum of understanding so that both sides, you know, what we agreed to on that, in that meeting is down on paper. And we'll come back and revisit it after two years when other things have affirmed up, like school plans and city plans and so forth. So, but it seems, it's a very, it was a very favorable meeting.
It just, sorry, everyone knows, this has to do with where the recycling bins will be, gonna be placed.
The proposed move will be, uh, over to what some of the land they acquired back from the Army Reserve. And the, the good news is, it's already fenced in, so, uh, we won't have to erect any fencing for this.
Well, we didn't have fencing.
Well, we were talking about if we're, this other temporary places, we'd have to put up some fence, but this is already a fenced-in lot, which was.
You have to, where it was before, you have the benefit that the backstop.
The backstop, so, and, and it was to the east, so like, if it was a west wind, it's, yeah, it would be go up against that.
So this will be a bunch. So it's actually on the, because in the north side of Army Reserve, what they gave up.
So the easy access for the public is gonna be off of the Goose Island Drive, right back in that corner, so it's, and it's all good gravel lot that was already there from the Army Reserve, heavy equipment that was parked back in that area, so it's, it seems to be an ideal location.
We were told that, uh, at least until March, sometime in March, probably March first, we have to have them out of there, and we may have to have them on sooner, so this was really a timely.
From where they are now.
From where they are now, so it's a timely compromise, so thanks to the city for working with us on that.
Will the, will the, uh, school be able to help you put up a sign that says, because they've, where they've been moved to, cause there are gonna be people, even without the media, even with the media, that are gonna go there, and they'd be like, where'd they go?
That's the point, that there should be a sign put up for a while to.
Yeah, even if it's just for a few months, this, through the spring.
I don't.
Go that way, it's not that far, so.
I think even on the fencing that's existing there, when the, uh, was the, was the old guard property, we'd be able to put up a sign up there, says future site of, and I know that Evan Ebowar is planning on a social media campaign to notify the people as, as soon as we, uh, have the MOU all signed off, and, but we haven't heard any more other than that one date so far from the school district, but like we're, we've been concerned, that could change at any point, it could be sooner than, sooner than March if, uh, things develop differently.
Sounds good. Anyone have anything else for Andy?
I've got a question, uh, it's been brought to my table by different people. Do, we don't have an exit interview for employees in our handbook. State, is there, there's nothing in there that states if somebody wants to do an exit interview? I mean, it was brought.
I don't.
Lot of places do that.
Yeah, Mark, I think it's pretty common practice, I don't know without going back and reviewing the handbook to see if it's in there, it, I, I don't recall.
I don't, it's not in there as far as.
Yeah, I know that, so I'm, I'm, I would like to see us talk it over or whatever, review it, and, uh, I don't know who would do the exit interview, how that would work or what, but I think we should put it on the agenda and have a discussion on it, cause I think it'd be a very valuable.
Well, and I don't think you could just say, uh, department head will do the.
No, no, that can't be.
Maybe that's the reason they're leaving.
That's what I mean, we should have a discussion on who does it, cause, yeah, it'd have to be a neutral neutral party, I mean.
That's where that HR department comes in again.
I think you're right on that one, true.
That's, I mean.
For now, it could be Holly, cause we're, we're someone at, at that firm, cause we have a contract with them.
Is that something Lynn could do?
Let me, uh, I'll visit with Holly, she did the, you know, she put together the manual anyway, we'll see if there's a reason she did not include that, or if she's got some language that we could look at and decide whether you want to add it or not, and then how best to implement it, she'll, she'll have some ideas on that.
Yeah, I mean, I, that'd be a, I think we should look at it very seriously, cause, yeah.
And like I said, I think it's probably a pretty common practice that we do it. Um, I'm not sure that it's done consistently or the same way from office to office or department to department, but we can check on that.
But I would, I mean, yeah, it'd have to be the H, HR person, like you said, it could be the department head, that's, you know, I mean, they, they can't talk to them, cause it might be something, you know, I mean, it's, yeah, it'd have to be a neutral, neutral site, uh.
Yeah, I mean, that could be a cause, Mark, but it could also be that, you know, our wages aren't competitive.
That's what I mean.
There's a move out of town, there's, you know, whatever. You know, so I mean, there are some things that aren't necessarily driven by, you know.
We could give them the option, could you say it'd be an op, option to do it, or it, it's your, you know, if you have something you want to express about the county or something, you know, that's.
And I would guess if we were having Holly or somebody at that firm do it, it, it could be done, could be a phone, or
Yeah.
video conference, it wouldn't have to be where you would have to have someone there. So that they have a chance to, whatever it is, if they have grievances to air, they have a place to do it.
Yeah. Then I would say that would be, uh, brought to the supervisor board, or.
Well, it would be brought to the elected official or, or your board, if in fact it's a department head that you supervise.
Yeah. Okay.
And, Andy, don't you think that in, in Holly's review of our policies and so forth, and our forms that we currently have, that that's probably something she'll also comment on?
Yeah, I, I mean, keep in mind that we can put it in our policy, but if the employees who's leaving chooses not to, um, participate in next an interview, we really don't have a whole lot of leverage there.
Yeah, yeah, can't make them do it, because they're already leaving.
But yeah, I suspect that in the.
Give, give them an opportunity to do it if they have something they want, comments they want to say.
And they know someone else is gonna see it.
Yeah.
Um, but yeah, I would think, Steve, you're right, in the HR audit, there should be, that was probably one of the things that they looked at is whether that was consistent or inconsistent throughout the county.
Yeah, even if we had in their file, uh, that it was offered to them, and they either elected to or did not, we'd at least have knowledge that something was offered or, or occurred.
Yeah. Right.
Yeah, I'll follow up with Holly on that, and I'll get back to you on it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else?
I don't think so.
All right. Thank you, we'll talk to you later.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you, Andy.
All right, head back up to Knox Financial, four fifty-seven B, deferred comp plan.
Yeah, this is just a update, we have a plan with Knox Financial offering deferred comp uh, payroll deductions to employees, and so this is just an update on our authorization to do that, or it should be a pretty, not much to discuss.
Do we take bids on that, or how does that?
Uh, there, we don't pay anything for it, so there's no.
Yeah.
There's no bid. So, we. My only comment has always been is that we don't have whole bunches of them, cause we have, each one has to be a separate setup for payroll deduction, so Lynn has to set up each company's deduction, so right now, any new employees, this is the only one that we're doing payroll deduction. And anyone, anyone can retire whatever they want, if they want. And anyone, anyone can retire whatever they want if they want to set it up on their own, but this is the only one we're doing payroll deduction for. Now we, for new employees, we do still have a nationwide account that we had before this for people who had that existing when this one started, so.
But it didn't cost us any money, but the firm is making money off the employees we send to them, so.
Yeah.
That's, you know.
Yeah.
Who, it's the referral, I mean, how does that happen? Maybe it should be a whole piece of public.
I don't, I, I, yeah, I don't think, I don't know, most of them have a fee structure that's built up that isn't. Just what it is. I don't know that.
I mean, yeah.
I don't know what, how much they're keeping or how much you invest.
Yeah, that's not our.
Percentage.
Yeah, and so, and I don't know that.
That's not of our business what they charge.
Well, I know, but.
If they're doing it for us for nothing, they ain't charging us nothing. It's.
So we're giving one, but we're giving.
It's all up to the employee, yeah.
I, the, the reason we went with this one the last time is that the one we have nationwide, which was a. Is the ISAC preferred vendor, if you see any of the ISAC things, that they're always mentioned, they were the ISAC preferred vendor, but they didn't have a person locally. And we saw them once a year. We were pretty lucky that they would come, and so this firm came in and they're right across the street, and so that's what. Current employees like is that they can, they are somebody they can visit with if they need to make a decision or choice or something. But I don't know how you would even go about trying to. Like, take bids, because I don't know if they change their. I don't know how, I don't, they probably don't even make public what their fee, their percentage structure is, so. Do with that.
I think the, the, go ahead. I don't want to put words in your mouth, but what he's getting at is, I mean, if I'm wrong. We're giving preference to one financial company in town overall. There's several other financial.
Within a block, there's three more advisors, like, well, I don't know, but.
Yeah.
If I would think. That this one's bad. I'm just saying.
I would say if you, if it becomes an issue where you want, where there's multiple, then we don't do any.
Yes.
Here and let people.
People do their own.
Do their own, yeah.
So I think that probably would be more equitable.
Yeah, I, I would not be opposed to that. I just don't want it to be that we're taking payroll deductions and trying to sense.
Send them to thirteen different places.
Exactly, that's their place, so that each one takes a setup and it's, but you could do it on your own and that's completely fine with us. I mean, that's. So I wouldn't, if that's what you want to do, that's up to you, but. I, I think it would be hard to tell anyone who has a current counter that we're not gonna do it anymore, but if you don't want to have us signing anyone new up anymore, then that would be.
Well, I mean, fourth of a cent, a half percent, a percent over the course of somebody's employment, that's a lot of money.
Yeah.
And, and there's a difference in who's charging what, and I'm not saying this is a bad op, this is a bad option, but.
And I, I don't even know, I, I would have to ask Len, I don't know who.
Costs us nothing. It's absolutely nothing. I don't know what the problem is. It's. Other companies want to come and play, say, we'll just, we'll just drop it. No, we'll do it for nobody then. I mean, they have the option to come to us and we'll say, no, if we got too many that want us to do it, we'll just drop the whole thing.
The first time this company came to the board, it was back and we're still upstairs, so it was filed back. I advocated that I didn't want to get open the door with a whole bunch of them, and they actually turned them down the first time, because their closest office was in West Shu, remember? So that, that board turned them down, but then when they moved, opened this new office, they came and asked the board.
I know it's not costing us anything, and I don't think that's the point that's being discussed right now, but we're, the point is. One company's giving, getting a, a preference over all other companies in town that offer the same things. I'd all, I'd actually. Like to see us discuss no more, like finish out the people that have the accounts there and that don't open up unless.
And that's why I think where HR person could sit down and talk to people, you have the option to pursue.
Yeah.
Further pre-tax money if you want, by setting up these accounts with your financial advisor.
Shall we just?
Or yes, yes.
Shall we just set this aside until we come to a closer point with an HR decision?
Yeah.
Yep.
And I, that would not, I wouldn't care about that. That would bother me a bit if we don't want to do, continue to do it, and I just don't want it to be where we're doing.
Right, right.
No, I understand.
Yeah, so.
Before we adjourn, I've got one thing I need to.
So do you want to take action? Do you want to continue at least for now with these people? Yeah.
Because it, the effective date reinstatement is twelve one twenty twenty five.
Yeah. For now, yes.
No.
Need a motion?
No.
And make that motion.
Second.
Is that for a year? What's the motion going to read?
I don't even remember what you're all that you feel.
It's for a year. It was from twelve, that was just for a month, that was.
Plan, uh, plan, year shall mean calendar year, so.
So I think the old one expired, so we're actually need to get this in place.
So we're going to do another twelve months with Knox Financial.
Yeah.
I don't care.
What's up? How many people can take advantage?
I don't, I don't know that. That's what I was just gonna say. I don't know how many people actually, because you know, like you, like someone mentioned, I think it was Shirley admitted, oh, everyone's doing Ipers, which is.
Yeah.
But most people rely on that. This is just something additional.
And everybody keep an eye on that and contact your legislators and the Don't Committee for Iowa. They, they keep mentioning that.
But for recommendation, Ipers would only be about half of what you're supposed to have. When you.
But that's kind of up to individuals what they do.
Yeah, Ipers is, yeah.
Like if they want to invest more.
Oh, yeah, that's completely updating individuals.
Yeah, all right. Well, we have a motion in a second to approve the eligible four seventy, four fifty seven B deferred compensation plan and trust. For one calendar year. Is there any further discussion? None? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Supposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously.
Before I forget, because I forgot last week, um, Iowa State Association of Counties, ISAC, wants to make a visit to northeast Iowa, us and two other counties. The two dates they narrowed it down to for Winnebago County are Wednesday, March twenty fifth, or Wednesday, April first.
For one purpose.
To come up and talk about the services through ISAC and introduce ISAC to our community and to our county employees. Just a, they're doing a ninety nine county tour, and those are the two dates they've identified for Winnebago County visitation.
Yeah, when we were at that. We were.
Wednesday, March twenty fifth. Go ahead, Steve.
Yeah, I said, when we were, Mark and I were at the regional meeting, and we had a little bit of discussion over that. I think what they're doing is, is beneficial, and it shows, it brings. Out some of the other things that ISAC is doing for the county and so forth, and I think it's beneficial.
It's only a part of a date. Five years ago. Have you guys been here? Yeah, it's been at least five years ago. They did this before, and they've had a lot of staff turnover since then, so they probably just want to come out.
Reintroduce.
Yeah.
So Wednesday, March twenty fifth, or Wednesday, April first, are the dates that work for the other counties neighboring us. It's gonna be a Wednesday, Thursday, Friday visit, but we, they're looking at Winnebago County on the Wednesday.
Yeah, I'd like to see the Wednesday, and I, I really would like to avoid the April fools.
All right, so you, you like Wednesday, March twenty fifth?
Yes.
Okay, does that work for the rest of you?
Yeah, I guess. Last week is pretty quiet at the.
Coordinate with them.
Yeah.
If it works for them, other counties might ever.
If that, yeah, I don't know of any.
The other counties, both of those dates worked for them. They were waiting for us, but I'll let them know Wednesday, March twenty fifth.
Do you have anything else? Motion to adjourn.
Second.
I will mention really quick, uh, I should have valuation numbers for you for next week, so we'll know what our.
It's ten times.
Our allocation of this, yeah. Um, yeah, so that should be ready for next, next week. Sorry, sorry.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We have a motion in second for adjournment. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Supposed, manless again.
I shall adjourn to sunny Florida.
Hi, Steve.
The idea of putting in an exit interview process would probably be good because of. I haven't times. Good disgruntled former employees just send a letter to all, whether it's one of the boards or you guys or whatever, to make complaints where it could be more, something more official.
Yeah.
And, and.
Yeah.
Yeah.
As we could affect some change to make things better.
Yeah.
Oh. Hi, Steve.
All right, have a, have a wonderful day, folks. I'm gonna enjoy.
Yeah, you too.
Okay, I just let ISAC. We're all done in here. Thank you.